Good morning. Call to order the January 25th meeting of the Salina County Commission. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Mr. Vidicson?
Here.
Commissioner Wies?
Here.
Commissioner White?
If we'd all stand for a flag salute, moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If Brad, our IT director, could instruct our virtual participants on how to raise their hand, I'd appreciate it.
If you're in the meeting, the Zoom meeting, alls you need to do is go down and select the raise hand function. We'll call on you. You'll unmute yourself. When you're done, go ahead and mute yourself again. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. All right, it's time for our citizens' input, where citizens can ask questions or bring comments, usually limited to three minutes, on items that are not on our agenda. Please state your name, address.
Norman, Mount Salina, Kansas. Just recently, you were discussing the issue in the City County Building Board about watering our lawn. We're running out of water. We're going to ration water. I might ask Mr. Smith, did they used to ration water out in Hayes, Ellis County?
Okay, Norman, anything else you'd like to bring to us?
Yeah, okay. You were discussing changing the logos on our county vehicles. Is this going to make our equipment run any better? DSNO has addressed this issue about changing the lettering and markings on their vehicles. The people said no. So we need to, you're starting to spend our taxpayers' money. For what? It's not going to make it run any better. So, for every action, there's an opposite and equal reaction. But they have rationed water out in Ellis County, in the city of Hayes.
All right, thank you, Norman. We'll move on to our consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of approval of tax rule adjustments as presented, approval of disposition of property, approval of accounts payable as presented, and approval of public forum agenda as presented. Are there any commissioners who want to address any of these? Amend table?
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a move for approval and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. The movement to our action items. Item number one.
RFA 104-22, GMP number two, contract amendment for jail with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. So, we have been talking for a while now about the process of building a new county jail and sheriff's office. The voters, back in November of 2020, approved issuance of up to $89,655,000 in bonds and a sales tax to go along with that for this purpose. Since that time, we've been working with our architect team and our construction manager at risk. And last fall, we brought you the first of two guaranteed maximum price contract amendments. That one was in the amount of $25,035,500. If anyone thought we were going to build a jail for that, sorry to disappoint you. Today is the second and final guaranteed maximum price contract amendment. This one in the amount of $53,755,96. That brings the total amount that we would be contracted with Turner Construction, pending your approval, In addition to that total contract amount with, between the county and Turner Construction, there are architectural fees, inspection fees, a fiber optic line from this building to the new jail, the purchase of the land for the new jail, furniture and fixtures, and owner contingencies of a little over 10 million, which brings the total to that $89,655,000 as approved by voters in November of 2020. So, we have with us today our architect, Jeff Lane, from Trainer HL, as well as our project manager, Colby Shepherd, with Turner Construction. And Colby has a couple of pictures that he just wanted to present and answer any questions. And then we'd be happy to answer any questions from the commission or the public.
Great. Colby?
Good morning, commissioners.
Welcome.
I'm Colby Shepherd with Turner Construction. Just wanted to give you a brief update on the new Salina County jail project. So as Phil mentioned, back in October, you approved GMP number one, and then we started construction in November. Currently, here's some pictures of the site. Mass excavation is complete, and the building pad is complete, and then we are working on footings and foundations. And then, next slide, please. This is the overall schedule that we reviewed back in October. We're still on schedule. We are here in January, asking for your approval of GMP number two. And with that, we are looking to be dried in by fourth quarter of this year and to be complete in September of 2023. So on behalf of Turner Construction and my team, we're thrilled to be here in Salina, working with you all, and looking forward to the next 18 to 20 months. Thank you.
Thank you, Colby. Does anyone have any questions for Colby? All right, thank you much. I don't know, does Jeff have any remarks he wants to make? No? Okay. Comments, questions from the commissioners? Any comments or questions from the public? Seeing none, I'll ask commissioners if they would like to take some action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature GMP number two for the Salina County jail.
Been moved and seconded. We approve RFA 104-22, GMP number two, contract amendment for jail. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you for attending this morning, guys. Okay, item number two.
RFA 105-22, Programs for ARPA Funding with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
Good morning again, commissioners.
Morning.
So, in March of 2021, as part of the federal stimulus to recover from the COVID pandemic, Congress passed and the president signed the American Rescue Plan Act, which did a number of different things, including providing direct funding to each of the 3,000-plus counties in the United States. Salina County's local share of that is $10,532,376, the first half of which we received in late May, early June of 2021, and the second half we anticipate receiving this year. We engaged a consultant team with iParametrics to assist us in making plans for expenditure of those funds, as well as keeping us in compliance with all of the federal regulations associated. And on August 31st of last year, we presented to the commission, and you approved, a framework that guides our expenditure of the funds. That framework divides the funding into a number of different categories and allocates funding to those categories. I'm here to talk to you today about potential approval of four additional projects in three of those categories. One of the categories, and it was the one that got sort of the highest vote total from our public input process, was business recovery. People really felt that businesses were severely impacted by the COVID pandemic, particularly the shutdowns that they experienced in 2020, and wanted to do something for our local business community. In Phase One of the funding program, we programmed $2140,000 for that purpose. There is additional funding for that purpose. In Phase Two, which as I said, will get approximately this June, we reserved $1,640,000 of that funding for a contract with the Salina Airport Authority, which we did last summer, leaving us $500,000 for an additional program or programs in the area of business recovery. The program that we're presenting to you today is a county cash program, which would involve contracting with an app development company called KOLU. And what KOLU does is, it's an app you download to your phone, and then you save your credit or debit card information into that. And when you spend money on your creditor, registered creditor debit card at a participating business, you earn points. So what that does, the first thing that does, is that stimulates individuals in the local community to put their money where their mouth is, right? They said that they think it's important that we support local businesses. All right, this is your opportunity to support those local businesses. And then, your spending would then earn you something as well. So, the second piece of this is promotion of that. So, there's, the first piece is the contract with KOLU for their app development service. The second piece is to promote that to individuals and businesses. And that would include a contract with the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce to help promote, including their staff time, as well as, you know, ad buys and that sort of thing. And then the third piece is a fee that we would be charged by a third-party processor to actually reimburse the businesses where these points are redeemed. So, just to pick a random example, if, say, Blue Sky Brewery were one of the businesses that were participating in the redemption, if I had gone to several businesses down, you know, on Santa Fe, or out in Gypsum, or Brookville, and earned a bunch of points, I could then take my points to Blue Sky and say, hey, I'd like a pizza today, show Blue Sky the points that I had earned, and they would redeem them. They would then be reimbursed for that redemption by the county's ARPA funds. And that's all processed through that third party. So that's the first program. Again, that is targeted for that business support, which was a high priority. The second and third programs to talk about today are programs for workforce development. This was also identified by the public as a high priority for recovery from the pandemic. Although our unemployment rate in Salina County has been blessedly very low compared to other parts of the country, we have need for workforce in a number of different areas. So, we solicited proposals from each of the post-secondary institutions in town. And we're also working with the Salina Area Chamber on another proposal as well. But we received the proposals from the post-secondary institutions. We're still working through some things with K-State Salina Aerospace and Technology Campus, but with Salina Area Technical College and Kansas Wesleyan, those are the two that are before you today. Salina Area Technical College's proposal is $185,000 to support training of CDL licensed drivers, so essentially truck drivers. As you know, that is a need that we have in the Salina County organization currently. We are struggling to hire CDL drivers for Roden Bridge. It is also a need that exists more broadly within the community. And so it really directly targets something that this community could benefit from. Kansas Wesleyan's proposal is a little bit of a different level. Theirs is, because they are a bachelor's degree granting institution, their proposal is to provide courses toward a bachelor's degree for local law enforcement. And they have lots of information about why that's a good thing in the community. There's statistical information about law enforcement officers that have higher levels of education tend to respond more effectively in certain situations. So, it's a great thing because it helps Salina County Sheriff's Office and Salina PD retain, attract and retain, law enforcement officers. It also helps the community because those law enforcement officers respond more positively. The last program would be targeted to the public health response category of the ARPA funding. We have done a few different things in the public health response. This one is to support community mental health. It is also an app-based program, like the county cash program I described earlier. This one is called Cope Notes. Cope Notes is a private company that was founded by a computer programmer who has some personal history with mental health challenges. And what it does, it uses some cognitive science-based research to send out text messages. And you're thinking, well, why is that a big deal for people's mental health? Well, it sends out positive messages at random times throughout the day that has actually been shown to change the way that people are thinking and to get people to think more positively. So the proposal is to have 200 subscriptions available for both county employees and residents of the community. And that would be a little under $24,000 for that program. So, those are the four different programs targeting those three areas of your plan. I know that's a lot to take in. We do have a few individuals here who can speak about the different programs, if you'd like, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
My first question, Phil, would be on the workforce development for law enforcement. And it, I assume that these officers need to be employed by the police department or the sheriff's office to be able to be eligible for this program. Is that correct?
Yes, that, so the idea is that this would be a benefit to employees. This would not be something that we would offer to, you know, undergraduate students who are hoping to become law enforcement.
And once they've completed these classes and so forth, that does make them eligible for a higher pay grade, I presume?
Depends on the particular agency. My understanding is the city of Salina does have educational incentives that they offer. Salina County generally does not in the sheriff's office, in terms of their base pay, but obviously that would help them with promotions and so forth.
You know, I think that's something we should take a look at, and I commend the police department for doing it, but the sheriff's office in Salina County hasn't done that because what incentive do they have to go take these classes if there's no pot of gold at the end of the rainbow for them? I think, I think we need to take a hard look at that. And it sounds like a good proposal.
One question I have, starting with one question, I guess. The chamber was quite involved in earlier fundings that we received and helped us tremendously in dispersing those funds throughout the businesses here in Salina. This, is it Culo?
KOLU.
KOLU. There's an exact dollar amount that is available there. And once all these points and redemptions have exhausted that, that goes away.
That's a great question. Thank you, Commissioner. So, as I said, we have $500,000 remaining in that particular pot of funding. So, the KOLU, the, I described the different pieces of this, right? So, KOLU would be about $65,000 per year. So, we're proposing to fund the first year. But within that $500,000, there is funding available to do years two and three, if we wish to continue it. We're proposing $45,000 for publicity. The vast majority of that would go to Salina Area Chamber, you know, subject to further approval by your commission of an award to them. But that includes about $25,000 to offset a salary for a new marketing person that they are bringing onboard. And that's really just their first year, because they had, they had plans to continue that program long-term anyway. But in this first year, to help them get that up and running, it would be about $25,000 to offset that salary, and then about $20,000 for, you know, radio ads and newspaper publications and that sort of miscellaneous stuff to try, flyers that you could leave at businesses, that sort of thing. And then, there's also the funding for the third-party payment app, and that's, that's very small. It's about $9,000, and that would probably fund us for a couple of years. So, the idea with this, because with all of the ARPA programs, we're supposed to be promoting sustainable solutions. And so the idea with this is, if it's successful, it could actually grow our sales tax base. And we could eventually, you know, bring it back to the commission and say, do you wish to continue this out of the general fund? And hopefully, would be able to see, hey, revenues went up. You know, here's, here's the money that we would have to continue this. Don't know whether that will be the case, but, but very hopeful based on the experience in other jurisdictions. Now, you know, Commissioner Sparks and I had a conversation yesterday, and he pointed out, you know, many of those jurisdictions are much larger than Salina County, the places where KOLU has had success. So, this is a little bit of a different market for them. So we'll see whether it's successful or not. But we feel like this really is, you know, I've had extensive conversations with Eric Brown at the chamber. He's presented it to, to his board as well. And we really feel like this is an opportunity for the public to be engaged. You know, this is not just, hey, we got this nebulous money from the feds, and we're going to dole it out to businesses. It's an opportunity to use that money and get people to actually, you know, self-invest in local businesses, so.
And I assume that these funds, this program that all businesses can participate throughout the county.
Yes, absolutely. That's something I've been very clear with the chamber on, that it's not just chamber members, that we need to do research to, or, sorry, outreach to Gypsum and Brookville and other, this area, other parts of the community as well.
And the chamber's on board to, to run this program for countywide and not a little, little bit outside of what they're...
Yes, and as you pointed out, they, they do, they did partner with us with our CARES funding, our previous funding. And they did do outreach to non-chamber members through that program as well, so.
And have we had conversation with the city of Salina? I know they have some fundings of their own about what we're looking to possibly do, and if they would have a buy-in to it. if they would have a buy-in to it or help with some of these.
Yeah, not on this particular one. The conversations that we've had with the city have really centered around housing. They're very, as you know, we committed a million dollars to housing. We previously signed a contract between the county and the city regarding Southview Estates. That was our phase one housing incentive. We have phase two housing incentives coming up. So we're continuing to engage with the city particularly around housing. I also mentioned that we were in discussions with the Chamber of Commerce regarding another workforce proposal as well. And I want to make sure that the chamber is engaging with the city on that proposal because I think that does have a crossover. The COLU in particular, we have not engaged with the city because we feel like this is something that, you know, it takes one or the other of us to run it, so we could do it.
I like the way that you've dissected this for us and explained it because this isn't a stimulus package that the feds put out necessarily to, you know, where we stand by the mailbox and wait for our check to show up. I mean, the people have to show a need for it. You've explained that to us, how they can earn their share of it and the needs that go forward from there, so I do appreciate that very much.
One of my major, and it's like we had this conversation yesterday, but it's like still, one of my major concerns is that it's like this COLU is a situation where it's like there's another area that all my banking information is into, my credit card is out there for another group to get ahold of. Plus, they're actually even saying right here, this app is able to, for you, the direct customer, support services in case they suspect such errors and further investigation resolution. It's kind of like, okay, we have issues of not being able to get your direct deal, and it's up to you to get that. And it's up to the county, the county's sole responsibility to provide the funds for distribution to merchants. And this Tepalte agreement that it's kind of like, okay, they are the ones that is hooked up with this company, and they're the ones that are distributing the money back to the merchants. And if you have issues, then who do you go to? Tepalte or do you go to COPLA or whoever? But you've got these apps and everybody is dealing. So I look at it as that you, first off, to even get started with this, is you're going to have to be kind of a savvy spender because you got to have this app on your phone. Now you got to have to be able to do this, and you have to be able to do that. To me, it's kind of like one of those issues where it's kind of like overboard for the general little guy out here that doesn't know how to do all that.
Yeah, absolutely. Take your point, Commissioner. You know, an app-based rewards program is not for everyone. I get it. My mother, who is 86, does not do apps, and she does not, she does not even have a credit card. She tore up the credit card when my dad passed away, right? So she, this would not be something that would target her, and it would not target everyone in the community. But it would target a significant number of people, not just younger people, but there are a significant number of people at all age spectra throughout the community who use apps. And I understand your reticence about yet another app that has my credit card information, but, you know, I've got four or five apps on my phone right now that have my credit card information in them. And it absolutely, I mean, I think people need to understand that that is a risk. County Councilor Montoya and I have gone through the agreement with COLU, and we, he, Mr. Montoya had some lengthy conversations with an attorney in New York City about the fact that we need to make sure that the county is not on the hook for those breaches, need to make sure that the county is protected in this situation. And part of the way this works, and I want to be clear on this for the public, the county is not going to have your credit card information, right? The county would contract with COLU, that app, their app stores the information. The county's not going to have access to my credit card information. The county's also not going to have access to redeeming businesses' banking information. That's what Tepalte is for. So that's the reason it's structured the way it is, but absolutely not everyone in the community will participate, but we think a significant number of people will, just based on uses of things like, you know, the Starbucks app, for example.
Okay. I kind of wish to have Commissioner Shadwick weigh in on this. A business owner, he understands the apps and how they work and how they would be useful in his business. Do you have any way in on this or any enlightenment?
It's just another tool in the toolbox. It'd be helpful. It would not be a problem for our staff to handle it. I mean, there's a lot of upsides to this, and I don't see any downsides as a business owner. But will it be hugely popular? I don't know, you know? But I do like the whole concept of, instead of just giving money to a restaurant, is to incentivize people to spend money at that restaurant. That makes a little bit more sense to me than just a stimulus check.
And it's not the same, but it's kind of related. The number of people that are now using Venmo and things like that, it's just another tool, a way of banking money or moving money or, and it's become quite popular for a number of people, so.
And for those that are concerned about their privacy, they don't have to use this.
Right.
It's as simple as that. Just don't sign up for it.
Well, and I will say, thank you, to that point, we have also had some conversations with the chamber about could we pair this with a Smoky Hill Silver, you know, sort of companion piece as well, so people could just deal with cash and do that. And that's something the chamber does normally, so. If there are any other questions specifically for COLU, I see that Michael Missouri, who's one of the COLU reps, is on the Zoom. If there's anything specific to COLU that we need him to address, or otherwise he could, you know, just make a comment and public comment when we get there.
Any questions for COLU from the commissioners? And while we're at it, is there any comments or questions that the public might have that they would like to bring? Please come forward.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Brad Nelson, Chief of Police. I saw this, and I just wanted to say that I'm very supportive of the program, and just a couple of things that I wanted to add as far as what the discussions went on so far. Certainly, I've read some of the same research that they talk about, and I wholeheartedly agree with what they're saying. One thing it did mention, that did not mention, that I've read in research is it also tends to, as far as education goes, you're less likely to use force, or you use less force. It's not, I'm not talking to use less force of masters versus of bachelors, but I'm just saying, the more education you have, you tend to use less force, and that's been shown in research. Probably the reason for that is you may understand the policies a little bit better. I'm not sure, but I'm just saying that's been shown too. That was not mentioned in this report, proposal by KWU. The other thing I would say would definitely help recruiting, in my humble opinion, if you could say at the beginning, when you're trying to bring an officer in or an applicant in, you could say up to 93 hours of college credit would be at no cost to you. I think that'd be a huge recruitment program for both the city and the county. To answer the earlier question about our educational incentive program, we do have that. I started that about four years ago. It's not a lot of money, but it's some money. For associate's degree, it's $500 a year, but that's for the entire career. Bachelor's is $1,000 a year, and a master's degree is $1,500 a year. And that may not sound like a lot, but again, it's for the entire, your whole career. So if you do 30 years, that's quite a bit of money. The only other thing I really wanted to comment on, other than just my general support for this, is that there's a part on the third page that talks about books, and for an additional X amount of dollars, all textbooks will be included for students. What I can say is I went, last went to college in 2004 to obtain a master's degree, and I can say back then, books were 100, 150 a piece. I don't know what they are now, but you're talking a lot of money for books. And if there's some way this could include that additional 15,000 for the program for the officers, that would be great, too. I'm not trying to be greedy, but I can tell you, I do know how officers think, and if we tell, and deputies think. If we tell them it's free, free doesn't mean you got to buy five $200 books. That's not free. But that's just my thoughts, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any of me.
Well, I will make one comment. Coming from the fire service, there were many opportunities for higher education, getting more, you know, more diplomas or whatever. It wasn't always tied to the dollar, more so it might be tied to preparing yourself for a promotion, being, having more education, more knowledge, might make you a more viable candidate for a promotion along the line. And many times, some positions might require a higher degree of education and such. So outside of the monetary gain, there's the gain that might move you up the promotional ladder, too.
That's 100% correct, Commissioner. I'm remiss, I didn't bring that up. In our promotional process, it's all kind of point-based, and you do gain more points the more education you have, as far as your degree. So that's extremely true. It'll help you in the promotional process by having these additional degrees. It's a great point.
I have a quick question. Is if a person does come on staff, and you've hired this person, and they decide to go further and educate themselves, do they actually get time off during their workday to go to school, or do they have to work that schooling time around their days off to be able to attend this?
That's another great question. I can say things have changed with online now. That's changed a lot, but usually it's tried to be scheduled when they're not on duty. But with that said, because I'm a strong supporter of it, we'll do whatever we can to get them off to go to those classes. I can assure you, we'll do everything we can to get them to attend. But they'll know that before going in. It's, they won't enroll and then find out they can't go to classes. It'll have to be approved before.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
And to go back to Commissioner Vidrickson's remarks and questions there, we are in the process now of doing a job evaluation and payroll structure and such. It might be a good time to see if something like that should be plugged in, but.
I would concur with that.
Is that the educational incentive program? I can say I didn't reinvent the wheel. I mean, I looked at what other departments were doing, but it's definitely out there. There's a lot of examples of an educational incentive program like I spoke of, so it wouldn't be that hard to get the information.
Well, and Chief, like you alluded to, I mean, the $500 a year doesn't necessarily equate to a lot, but it does, just like you have been talking, gets them to that next step up the ladder, which does equate to a dollar amount.
Exactly.
You know, every step that you take is more money in the worker's pocket.
Exactly, that's true.
I would like to just ask the question here, is that where we're kind of refining dollars being spent in certain areas, and I look at it as that here, and you, Mr. Administrator, you've talked about going out to different educational areas here. What about, I mean, I look at it, here the truck drivers, I look at it as, okay, we're in dire need of welders, we're in dire need of nurses, we're in dire need of teachers. Everything fits under this whole umbrella, and here we've pretty much situated on two or three different little areas. Is there any funds available to sit here and say the county could help out in a whole educational arena to help anyone wanting to go to school? I know that's not our ballgame, but I mean, there's certain areas that I look at as that the welders, as much as the demand is a truck driver, maybe not for just Celine County, but for the general area. And so is there any other funds available to help general?
That's a great question, Commissioner. I will say, the reason it's truck drivers and not welders is because that's what Salina Tech proposed. I did not give them, I did not tell them I wanted a proposal on truck drivers. I said, give us your best proposal, and that's what they came back with. I mean, we're certainly open to that. You'll recall, in the framework plan, we reserved about half a million dollars for future opportunities when we identify them. The problem I see with a generalized educational incentive to everyone in the community is you start to water down the dollars really quickly. Education is very expensive, particularly at a private university like Kansas Wesleyan. And so, you know, the number of people you can assist kind of goes very quickly when you, 10 million sounds like a lot of money, but yeah. So, I mean, I'm certainly open to looking at additional opportunities. Like I said, we were still talking with the chamber, we're talking, and I will say the one with Case State, Case State Salina Aerospace and Technology Campus, trying not to say poly, right, is, that one is airframe certification. So again, addresses a specific need for employers in this community. So yeah, I mean, I'm certainly open to welding and additional things as we move forward, yeah.
I don't want this to drag on too much more, but, and I agree with Roger on that. And I also think that Salina Area Technical College could help define that, along with the chamber, perhaps. The chamber knows what jobs are needed out there in the workforce. I'm sure that Salina Area Tech knows that also, but together, perhaps they could water this down if you want to either it that way. Maybe there's not that many truck drivers. Maybe they can be used for welding, or draftsman, or aerotech, or whatever. So I think maybe that conversation could be reevaluated between Salina Area Tech, Chamber, and your workforce development.
Please come forward. Name and address, please.
Rodney Penns, 2368 Georgetown. Just in light of the conversation that you're having, I would highly encourage you to seek other areas. I'm a former truck driver, and I gave up my CDL because the risk reward is no longer there. Truck drivers are an increasing target for litigation. I had several instances where people driving in cars made very foolish choices in front of me as a trucker, going down the interstate, 78,000, 80,000 pounds, that had something occurred and they died in an accident that was completely their fault, I still could have been the subject of litigation because of that. So the reason why we have fewer truck drivers is because the risk is becoming much greater than the reward. That's just nationwide. So I would encourage you to seek other areas. I get it, we need them, we sure do, but there's other areas that we need as well, and I think you should probably try to expand that. So thank you for allowing me to comment on that.
Thank you. I have a thought on this, and it might be off-base, I hope not, but when it comes to the trucking industry, it's usually, I know there's a local trucking company here that has scholarships or whatever that they fund into the technical institute. But you have Ma and Pa Trucking Firms that hire four, six, 10, 12, you know, I don't know how many the county might have, 15 CDLs. They have, there's a large group of people, but they have, or organizations, but they have a limited need where they can't do it on their own. When you go into the need for nursing, you look at Salina Regional, I don't know how many hundreds of nurses they have a need for, but...
95 right now.
90?
95 nursing openings.
There are 95 openings, so how many, what is their population in nursing there? Where they would, where they as a private entity would be more attuned to offer a program like this on their own because they have a very, very large need where a trucking industry might need two, four individuals, where they couldn't do it on their own. So it gives the county the opportunity to kind of bring that whole thing together and... And we've got Great Plains and Cabota needing welders. They, they need a large number of welders where they might be able to put a tuition incentive in at Kansas Tech and meet that need. I don't know.
Well, with all that conversation, it, it just kind of is appearing to me that maybe, I mean, because now you're talking about KU School of Nursing. And my question, I guess, would be, do all, are all of these entities aware of what's possibly on the horizon for available money? I don't know.
I will confess that I did not do direct outreach to KU School of Medicine. So I certainly can, and I certainly can...
No, I'm not putting this back on you, Phil. I'm just going as, you know, as the media goes, has, I, I don't know how we get the message to everybody. Because, I mean, as we talk about this, we, this goes way beyond Salina Area Tech, or way beyond the KU School of Nursing, way beyond Kansas Wesleyan University. And, but it is specific to Salina County. And that's where, where I think we need to focus as far as the workforce goes. What type of workers does Salina County need? And we have identified some of those here today, but it just doesn't, you know, go for every single job that's available in America. This needs to be specific to Salina County.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, I mean, I think these are, are good comments. I've, I've written these down. I'll go back, I'll have a conversation with Salina Tech, with the Chamber. I think KU School of Medicine, I can definitely involve them. Kansas Wesleyan has a nursing program as well. So, I mean, as I said, you know, we have another half a million for future opportunities. And so we can certainly look at that funding and, and bring something back in Phase Two. Because, you know, really, we're essentially talking about three different programs that we're able to fund, and with this $500,000, if we have another $500,000, maybe that gets us three more programs, one, one for welding, one for nursing, and one for something else. So, yeah, I think these are great comments. This is really good direction for our next round.
I'm probably stretching it out a little too far with all of that, but, you know, again, like you said, Wesleyan, KU has their own ideas on where they're going to send the, I don't think they have more than a handful of people that go through there at a time, so maybe that wasn't the greatest example on my part.
Yes, Eric.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Eric Brown, President of the Chamber. Thank you all for being willing to look at another partnership with the Chamber as we work through how we help our small businesses recover. And that's one of the points that I wanted to make, and part of what is, drove, drew us to, to being involved with this is the pandemic and the way that it just wasn't a fair playing field across the board for small businesses. Small businesses represent 99.7% of all employees across the nation, so that's firms under 500 people. So that is a tremendous amount, and Salina County is no different. The, the other piece to think about when we look at, at ARPA funding, part of that is transformational. How do we get back into the mindset from the local side of going back into our facilities or into our local businesses and spending our dollars locally? The latest number that I was able to look was $68 of every $100 spent. If it's spent on a local establishment, it stays in the community. If, if you are spending it online, if you're spending it maybe in a, a box retailer, those types of things, that's about 40 cents that stays, or $40 out of 100 that stays in the community. So when you start doing that time and time again, that, that money starts rotating through the community, and it sometimes it's somewhere seven to eight times impact locally. So that's part of that, and that's really what I think this, this program will help do. In addition to what Phil said with the marketing side, part of our initiative as well as push is helping onboard these, these businesses that want to use the, the incentive program. So there's a lot of positives here. You're taking an individual that's going to spend their money in the community, and then you're plus-ing it up with the, the ARPA money as well. So it's a double impact that's happening. And at the end of the day, the end consumer is getting more value locally than what they could online even. So that's a huge benefit. The other thing that hasn't been talked about is when you have all of these businesses pulling together in the same direction, and that's part of what we're going to help with, and getting this name out there, we will have more users, we will have, because once they understand, if they, if they go to AdAstra and they buy $10 worth of coffee or whatever it is, and they, they can get X amount of dollars over at Blue Sky or wherever else is in the community, it helps them, it helps kind of train, lack of a better term, the end consumer in, in spending their dollars local. So we're excited about it, and a great way to, to support the community and, and the county, obviously, and not just Chamber members. So I appreciate your, your thoughts on that. And the other thing I'll say on the, the truck driving, one, one of the things, the CDL for the last four years, when we pull numbers, CDL was the highest need in the Salina County for the last four years. It recently rotated. They're in the third position, but now retail and restaurant is actually the first and second highest need as far as job openings in the county anyways.
Eric, I just, a quick question in regards to something you just said here about the businesses here. Does all businesses able to hook up to this COLU? I mean, can a Walmart, Target, Ace Hardware, all sign up to spend your dollars at these locations?
One of the, the intents of, intention of COLU is to spend locally. And so that's owner-occupied local businesses. That's the same approach we took when we did the, the CARES funding and the grant program. You had to be located and operating in Salina County. And so that's, that's really the intent of this, is, is helping those businesses that may have been closed during the pandemic, that, you know, online, the e-commerce as a nation, we, it was up 32.8% in 2020, and we don't even have the 2021 number. So we know that that's part of what COLU and, and what this is geared to do, is specifically help local, local owner-occupied businesses.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, are you ready for a motion?
Yes, unless there's any more comments. Go for it.
I, I have a question.
Yes.
Is this an annual contract with COLU?
Yes. So as I mentioned, this is the $65,000s for the first year, but within that $500,000, we could actually fund three years if we decide to continue it.
Okay. I, I missed that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the programs as identified in RFA 105-22 and authorize the Chair to sign the COLU agreement and the county administrator to issue a purchase order to COPE notes and bring back grant agreements for the other entities as described.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right, we'll move on to item number three.
RFA 106-22 jail utility easement with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
Philip, one more time.
Yeah, sorry, I'm making it the Phil Show this morning, Commissioners, but this is actually one of three different easements that we're talking about with the jail property. There are two easements that we would grant to the city of Salina. One is for Stormwater. That one, we're still having some conversations about the specific language. County Councilor Montoya had a conversation with the city attorney, I believe yesterday, could have been Friday, on that. So that one will be forthcoming. The other one is a potential utility easement that we would grant directly to Evergy for a, a big crosstown power line that they are looking to construct. That one, there's not really urgency on because their construction schedule is actually sort of at the tail end of, of our construction schedule. And that is designed to not interfere with where we're placing the jail. This one that is before you this morning is the utilities with the city. So it basically covers water and wastewater, but we would also be able to run cable and electrical and other things within that same footprint. It is essentially a 20-foot wide ring around the building. And the reason that it's a ring around the building is for fire protection. We would want to have fire, water availability on all four sides of the building for, for fire protection. So it's a pretty standard agreement. It has been reviewed by county councilors, been reviewed by our architect and construction team, and I'd be happy to answer any questions and ask for your approval.
Well, I assume it doesn't impact design that we have already approved?
That's correct, but I'll let Jeff Lane address that as well.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, it, it does not. And, and actually, it's all on the outside where the property line is, so it allows for flex, flexibility in the future if you so chose to add in that space or that area. It also does not encroach on any of the other property that you have on that site that may be used for future use in, in, down the road.
Is this here easement, this 20-foot, is it pretty much, in looking at it to your site plan that you, I guess, is this pretty much just directly on top of the road that goes around this whole building?
It's actually outside that road, but it's, I mean, it follows that same loop, per se.
So it's, it is actually outside the road?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. And I, quick other question is that, because, and I noticed here that this here layout that we have is, that's done by our engineering staff, land surveyor, is that this still shows all the lot blocks and everything else? Is this still, it's not just one whole piece of ownership of the land?
Correct.
This is still how it's owned?
Yeah, you, you own all those lots.
Okay.
So the county owns them all, we just didn't parcel them up into one big lot at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, I'd entertain action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept by signature the permanent public utility easement as presented.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. We approve RFA 106-22 jail utility easement. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. Item number four.
Resolution 22-2356 Salina Community Economic Development Organizational, Inc., Board Member Appointment with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
In accordance with your Commission's discussion last Tuesday in study session, this is resolution appointing Robert Exline Jr. to the SKEDO Board. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions of the Commission? Questions or comment from the public?
Norman, Salina, one question. How many applicants did you have for this position? More than one?
Yes, I, I, there were at least two on our packet last week. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the resolution appointing Bob Exline, Rob Exline Jr. to the, to the Board.
Second the motion.
Been moved and seconded, the approved Resolution 22-2356 Salina Community Economic Development Organization, Inc., Board Member Appointment of Robert Exline Jr. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, it looks like we're going into informational items. Item number one.
Idle Fund and Jail Bond Report with Jim DeBois, County Treasurer.
Good morning, Jim. Thanks for waiting patiently for your turn.
Thank you, Commissioners. It's been an interesting year. If you've heard me said it, it's been really tough as far as interest last year. If you look three-quarters of the way down on your idle fund report, we earned interest as of December 31st of 2021 of $245,955. Now, compared to last year, last year we had 308, or the previous 2020, we had $383,527, so we're $137,572 short. In dealing with the budget and talking with the county administrator, we did project $300,000, trying to anticipate what our interest would be and how much we would make, so we're about $54,044 short. The interesting part about all of this is we take bids on all of our CDs that we put out, and our bids had been anywhere last year from a .22 to like a .35. And we're only making a .20 on our money market, on our main bank account. This year, as we did bids on $2 million, it went out, we had a bit of a .88. So I about fell off my chair.
A point, what was that again?
A .88. So, which is telling me really a couple different things. As we move towards recession, I always hate to say this, interest rates kind of tend to climb a little bit. So we'll probably make a little bit more money this year. The Fed has no rule of how many times they could raise the rate within that process, and, and doing some checking, but I've heard anywhere from four to six times. So it's a wait-and-see game of how things will turn out for us. Other than that, I had nothing else on the idle fund report unless you have questions.
Jim, going back seven or eight, 10 years ago, when we were drawing $60,000 or $20,000 interest, what was the interest rate at that time?
Oh, gosh, you know...
Roughly?
The highest of interest rates, if I could remember correctly, was like a, around a .8 to sometimes a 1 point. It just depends on, you know, on the facilities, the bank, what's, what's out there at the time. The majority of the money that we make, if you take a look at the sheet, is off of our main bank account on the money market, and we're only making a .20 now. So that's where the majority of the funds come from.
I just felt like, I don't know why, I, I thought that perhaps it was even on the plus side of the 1%. Seven or eight or 10 years ago.
On CDs, yeah.
Yeah.
On CDs, you bet.
Okay, so we're not talking about our general interest funds on CDs? This is just the idle funds?
These are just the idle funds, yeah.
Okay.
And it's, we're talking about all the idle funds.
All back.
Yeah. So, all of our investments. Any questions on our idle fund for that? The, on the MIP, as far as the jail bond proceeds report that we have, we're at $12,311.47. We really have nothing else to compare that to, but the majority of our funds are sitting right now in the municipal investment pool with the state of Kansas. So, and that's because the bank didn't want to take it and pledge it.
I'd like to go back just a second on idle funds.
Yeah, please.
When you're talking a couple of million dollars, is that, is that pretty level amount that what we normally have on our idle funds?
No, I, I try and ladder. It's, we have roughly, what, about 8.7, 8.5, somewhere in there in, in idle funds. Some of them will go anywhere from 20,000 to 50,000, 100,000, it just depends. And there's a myriad of different dates that they're going to be due within that period of time. So the larger ones, like the $2 million ones or million dollar ones... So the larger ones, like the $2 million ones or million dollar ones, I try and go out 24 months statutory. That's the highest I can go out to is 24 months on there. And the reason I try and ladder all of our funds is by statute, the treasurer has to keep the county fluid. So in case there is some kind of a disaster to kind of speak of, we do have to have access to our funds. And so I don't want to put everything on a particular date extended outwards to a point where we're going to be in trouble. And, and I will tell you, Commissioner Vidrickson, that I, I believe in doing everything as a team also. It's, it's just not me. I deal, I work with Phil a lot on all of this. I work with our team a lot on this. So it's, if we take a look at different things and we take a look at bids and we took a look at what's best for the county, we do it as a team. We just do it not singularly. Any further questions? Okay. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to item number two.
Human Resources Update with Marilyn Lemire, Human Resources Director.
Good morning, Marilyn.
Good morning, commissioners. This report, the range timeframe that it covers is mid-November to mid-January. During this time, we've got 12 new hires with 13 of those that are voluntary firefighters. So we kind of get those in, in bulk numbers. Transfers or promotions internally, we've got 10 employees that have moved to different positions. No longer employed, we have 12 individuals that are no longer employed by Salina County. Miscellaneous activities that we've been working on is documentation has been submitted to WSU for our compensation survey. So that is ongoing. We've done EEO reporting that is complete and also going through a couple capers, financial audits for both the county and the building authority. Upcoming plans is looking to, to fill positions. Currently, we are looking for the 14 2022 corrections officers positions that were added. Would like to get a couple over hires if we're able to do that as well. Corporal, we have two vacancies, truck driver, two vacancies, home health RN, two vacancies, attorney, two vacancies, GIS technician, pending interviews there, and juvenile intake and assessment, looking to fill that position. There was one additional position that was listed on their record specialist with the sheriff's office. We have been successful in getting that position filled. Other upcoming plans, working on a couple work comp audits, both for Salina County and the building authority. And that's a matter of running several reports to give it to those auditors. Running reports for our county financial audit, time clock plus the implementation of that, looking at February for having our first training. And then the civic plus HR onboarding implementation, hopefully get to working on implementing that very soon as well. As far as the budget update, the health plan is running at 95% of expenses to funding ratio, and the dental plan is running at 117%. Both of them are running a little high right now, but that is just three months' worth of claims for this plan year. So lot of time, lot of months to go to hopefully level that out. And then the ending 2021 budget for HR ended at 98%, which is, we do have a few outstanding bills that are still coming in, but in line with historical averages. And I'm available for questions.
One thing I see missing, Marilyn, is you're working with Wichita State.
Mm-hmm.
As we speak, as far as a.
The compensation. Mm-hmm. We have fed them lots of information yesterday. I provided them all of our job descriptions. We do have a meeting this afternoon, a virtual meeting with them, just to talk about the progress so far and answer any questions they may have. And of course, they'll answer questions that we may have as well. So that is still ongoing.
Thank you. Any other questions, Marilyn? Thank you for that report, Marilyn.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Item number three.
Quarterly Budget Update with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
Okay, Philip?
Morning again, commissioners. So this is the quarterly update for the fourth quarter, which means it's really an annual update. So 2021, the county budget performed very well. You heard the idle funds report from Treasurer DeBois, and Jim and I were talking in the hallway the other day, and as he pointed out, our interest income was down. And I said, yeah, well, sales tax more than made up for that. So we had a successful year on the revenue side. All of the county funds, except one, exceeded not only their budgeted revenues, but also my projection of revenues, which was essentially mid-year when we started talking about the 22 budget. The one exception to that was the Health Department Fund. They did exceed their budget. They came in a little bit lower than where I thought they would end the year, but they also came in below on the expenditure side, so it didn't really affect their fund balance. Also reviewed the Fire Department budgets through the end of the year, and those are all looking fine as well. So it's very positive going into our audit. We anticipate the auditors being here the end of February to do their onsite work. We've already received a list of things that they need for that. Be communicating with Randy Hofmeyer this week. And just in general, I think we're very well positioned as we start already talking about the 2023 budget development. So that's what I have for you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Just a quick one, but something I, if you could follow up with me. I had somebody inquire about the one cent sales tax that is charged to people that, downtown, the extra one cent sales tax. Okay. That, that money goes to the CID that gets dispersed in Old Chicago, you know, the bowling alley, et cetera, et cetera. The city portion of that has all been allocated. This, this person had mentioned why the county portion has not. So there, we have funds that can be used as incentives, from what I understand. And if that's not true, that's fine, but if we could check on that, I'd appreciate that. And we can follow up the conversation afterwards, after the meeting also.
Yeah, my understanding of that special sales tax is that that's all, the only, the only piece that we're getting that's incremental is for the jail in the CID.
Okay.
We do get a little tiny, but that's all going to the jail project. We, to my knowledge, we're not receiving, certainly the state is not reporting to us any.
Okay.
CID portion. That should all be going back to that district.
Just straight to the district and.
But I can verify that, and that's, yeah.
And I didn't, I didn't have the information to answer him, so.
Yeah.
I'm kind of searching too, so.
Okay.
Thanks.
I'll follow up.
Phil, on the Road and Bridge Fund and, and the revenues, give me an example of what, why, how we get revenues for the Road and Bridge Fund of $500,000. Can you tell me where we get that money from?
So the best example I can provide to you on that one is the gas tax. So, you know, the state collects a, a gas tax when you buy gas at the pump, and that gets distributed back. It's called city-county revenue sharing. And so that's always an interesting one to estimate every year when we go into the budget process. So for last year, for, yeah. So the 2021 budget, which is what we're talking about, was of course developed in the middle of 2020 when we were in the pandemic. So if you recall, during the pandemic, people stopped driving for six weeks when we were all shut down. Gas prices, I got gas for 98 cents a gallon at one point. And they, there was just really low revenue. And so at that point, I said, whoa, okay, we, we need to cut that revenue estimate for 2021. The reality of that situation is that only sort of impacted people's driving habits for about two months, and then it all came right back up. And so, so city-county revenue sharing was much higher for 2021 than I anticipated. They also, they get some really small miscellaneous things for like fees and that kind of thing. Their biggest revenue is, is the property tax. The property tax consists of current property tax and then also, you know, fees and penalties for people who pay late, and that was also up.
Okay, I was, I was just curious, because I know we don't charge for our services to grade the roads or put gravel down or anything like that. So I'm just curious why, where our revenues were being derived from. When, when you say the, the refund from the, your allocation from the state gas tax, is that by statute that, that has to go into the Road and Bridge Fund, or is that just our policy?
Statutorily, it has to be used for, we don't have to have a Road and Bridge Fund. It could all, Road and Bridge could be in the general fund, but statutorily, that revenue has to be spent on Road and Bridge activities.
All right. Thank you for the clarifications and education.
Any other questions? Let's see where we're at here. Item number four, commissioners' comments.
I will say that I was able to attend at least a portion of the Fair Board meeting last week, and the bulk of that, the conversation revolved around what they were going to do for revenue this year, having, not having a rodeo. And it looks like that they were going, they're centering their conversation on a demolition derby that's going to be held at the Salina Speedway. I don't know that they've contractually signed those papers or anything like that, but that was where the conversation was centered around, and that was, was the bulk of that one. Wednesday morning, virtually, I did attend the Airport Authority meeting, and it's centered this time around Gary Foss, who is their consultant for, for their air travel and so forth. And, I mean, there were so many different numbers floating out of there. It's amazing what they have done out there. I think some, some things that I, that highlighted for me was that Salina, out of seven airports that are reporting, the largest ones in Kansas, Salina has the cheapest fares going to the destinations that Salina can get to. We're the lowest fares out of seven reporting places. Employments were plus 21% in 2021 versus 2019, up, the travel's up 21%. Amazingly, to me, two, they, they report from all the different zip codes that buy tickets out of Salina, and two of the top three, number one and number three, were both Manhattan zip codes. Salina was number two. So that tells you that Salina is, and that's traveling going west, I, I would assume, because Manhattan does go east. So it's, it's a big deal. Our money that we've spent out there is, is being well, well-used, I think. It's the most passengers last year in 43 years of, of Salina Airport reporting. So it just keeps going up on what they're doing out there. And the largest market, I guess not surprising to me though, but is Las Vegas, is the destination going out of Salina. And I, and if I've got the numbers right, 29 people per day are going out of Salina to Las Vegas. That's, I'm not saying they're Salina people, but somebody likes to gamble. So that's pretty much the size of it. There weren't any real estate development things that they talked about this time. Their, their entire meeting revolved around passengers in Sky West, and this Gary Foss does an amazing job for the Airport Authority.
Commissioners, do they have any, any information on the Houston, Salina-Houston connection?
They talked about it briefly, but there's, there's nothing that they're, without a firm date, they're not willing, willing to say it. It's still on the table, it's still going to happen, but they have not released a date yet.
Commissioner, we did have a hand raised in the Zoom meeting.
Excuse me?
We had a hand raised in the Zoom meeting.
This is, we're in informational, this is a study session.
Okay.
Meeting, so we invite that individual to speak at the public forum, or if it becomes an agenda item, please, please step up and visit about it.
Has the money been allocated to the Airport Authority?
I, I will say yes, but that has to do with the definition of allocation versus obligation versus expenditure. It is, it has been allocated in your plan, and we have signed a contract, but we haven't spent any money because the service hasn't occurred yet.
Okay, that's perfect.
Any other commissioner comments? I'll make mention, I did attend my first SKEDO meeting last week, and it's quite enlightening how the report that came out of K-State about what they're looking to project to do, and that they have a 10-year plan set up for 2020, or 2035. It seemed like quite an aggressive plan. One, one piece of information I did glean out of that is where they talked about the expense of tuition for pilots to graduate. And she made mention that to, to graduate with a degree for a pilot is along the same line, very comparable to that of becoming a physician. And that just boggled my mind that it takes that much money commitment for an individual to go into becoming a pilot. So, and the, the payback for that is quite a while. A doctor starts making pretty good money right away. Someone coming out with a pilot's license has to work up through the ranks, go through the regionals before he ever becomes a, a captain on a, a major airline. So that, that was interesting to, for me. But other than that, there was a election of new officers and, but I, I did really enjoy the K-State, what they're getting ready to do out there, and I'm sure there'll be a lot of news briefs and, and information coming forward from them, so.
Who is the chairman this year for SKEDO?
I can't remember who the, who the new chairman is going to be.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I'll take better notes next time. I, I'll get that name.
I wish I could help out, Commissioner, because I was there too, but I, I blanked on it as well. It was Lloyd Davidson this past year, and he relinquished it to.
Well, I think Frank Hampton was last year, wasn't he?
He would have been in '20. It's been, yeah, it's been Lloyd Davidson in '21. And was it, was it Cheryl Murray for?
I don't know. It might have been one.
No big deal.
It might have been one of the virtual participants that I didn't get to really see. So, sorry about that, but we will get you that name. Any other announcements? If none, I would entertain a motion to.
So moved. So moved, yep, second.
Moved and seconded, we finish up our business here. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero. Aye, motion carries five zero.